Regular meeting of the City of Calamasa and Successor Agency to the Calamasa Redevelopment Agency meeting is now June 5th, 6:00 PM. And I've called the meeting to order. And Darlene, you want to give us a riproll call, please?
Councilmember Cervantes?
Here.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hewitt?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
I'm here. And we have City Manager Kovol, City Attorney, what's his name? Brendan, yes, the young side of the crew. City Clerk Gertis, Finance Director Reed, Planning Director Lusa. Public Works Associate Engineer Sakari. And then we go to City Engineer, yeah, Mike's here, Thornton. And Fire Chief O'Connell and Sheriff Sergeant Greenwald, welcome. Jeff, how about leading us in the pledge, please?
I'd be happy to. We can all stand and honor our nation's flag. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any changes needed for the agenda? On the agenda or the consent calendar? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, sorry, I missed my cue there.
Okay, well.
That's my fault. Everyone's looking at me. Staff would like to pull item number six for opposition to AB 742. The author of the bill has pulled that bill from the docket for the year. We do expect it'll come back in some form in future years, but this action is no longer required, so we're asking to pull it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now can I get approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda. Items one through eight minus six. House second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a presentation tonight. Is she here? We can hold up if you would. Sure, okay. Communications from the public. We're going to allow you to come up here and tell us your beefs, or your likes, or dislikes, whichever turns you on. It just, it gives you an opportunity to voice your opinion and say what a bad person I am and be happy about it. So, Ms. Guzman?
And I want to give a lot of kudos to the new senior manager, Summer. She's got quite the packet put together for the seniors, a lot of activities happening now for a change. But one of the city manager's responsibilities is to administer administration and administer to the City of Calamasa programs and the Senior Center. And many years ago, we had 75% of the citizens were seniors. I don't know if that's changed, I've been trying to get the numbers. So if anyone on the council can help me with that one. She's also trying to acquire computers again. From what I understand, we had computers before, but we no longer have them. She needs at least six laptop computers. I've called the Riverside County Aging Department and requested some assistance for that, so we could have at least one in the front, because that way we can have a better accounting of how many citizens are here in Calamasa. And I would also like to see it expanded so that we can have a transportation to some of the functions, rather than everyone having to drive here, or pick up their lunches through the drive-through. And what else? I just want to say kudos to Summer, she's really working hard, she's only been here two and a half months, she's accomplished quite a few events. So thanks to the City Council, thanks to the City Manager, and to Riverside County Aging Department and Mr. Gutierrez for having this happen. Because we pay quite a bit of money every year to have someone come over and take care of our Senior Center. That's all I have to say, I'm very proud.
I would be too.
May I ask a question? Did I, maybe I missed it? Where did, do you live here in Calamasa, or?
Yes, I lived here from 2001.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's Bairden. Bears sleep in a den.
Okay.
Okay. I might not have spelled it right there. Anyway, I've not been to too many of these, so I'm not sure if I'm going to mix protocols here, but I first of all wanted to thank Kelly, met with my husband and I, gosh, three, four weeks ago. When you're retired, you kind of lose track of time, just saying. But she was so informative and so pleasant and so professional that I just thought she needs a two thumbs up from everybody. Hello? Two thumbs up? Yeah, okay. Yeah, she was great. She's helping us, or helped us, just give us some direction regarding the golf course. We've been in Calamasa for over 30 years, we've lived on the 14th green for 27 years, and now the golf course, of course, we all know it's a, what it is, but it used to be a lake when we first moved here. When it would rain, the golf course became a lake, which was lovely. But anyway, so she gave us some directions, and hopefully we can do something and get it conserved, or better yet, two thumbs up if the city would buy it. Hello? Okay. So whatever it takes, you know, I can hold signs and get donations on a corner somewhere, but it'd be a great park. Calamasa doesn't have what Yucipa's got with Regional Park, or Cherry Valley with Bogart Park. We just don't, it'd be so nice with all this other stuff going up, that we could have a beautiful park, and it would be, you know, we'll take care of it, we'll put trails in for.
It'd be nice if somebody donated it.
Wouldn't that be lovely? Well, that brings us to another topic.
Don't go there.
Yeah, so, anyway, yeah, that would be lovely. They can call it what they want, yeah. But anyway, so, and then I'm also, I was here at the workshop that we had, I think, again, when that was, but I'm hoping that Calamasa can, I think you're looking at changing the logo, did I read this somewhere? News mayor, maybe? I don't know. But I'd like Calamasa, that's what I want for Calamasa. So I mentioned it at the workshop, but you know, now you can see them, all the bulldozers there next to the gas station, they're getting ready to put that, what, warehouse down there. And then I don't know what's happening near Jack in the Box, but I just, you know, I'm not against the progress, we need, everybody needs it, we haven't had much progress since I've been in Calamasa. Oh, what's that mean?
Thirty seconds.
Oh gee, thirty seconds, okay. Last but not least, so we live in a little cul-de-sac, Bueno Mesa, and we've been there, like I said, 27 years. All of a sudden, somebody's put a stop sign, sign with the red stop, and stop, and there's only three driveways in this cul-de-sac. I mean, and I've, since they put it in, I've ran it five times, and I haven't got a ticket yet, but I, we don't, seriously? I thought, okay, they could have put that money towards buying the golf course, and the red light's on. You know what that means?
You're done.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? No. Very long.
Rick, you want to give your two cents now?
I agree with anything he says. Sure.
Hi, my name's Rick Bearden. We've been, as you've heard, residents here for about 30 years. When we came here, we were much younger, but we have grown to love Calamasa. We live on the other side of the golf course. My main point here is, after talking to Kelly about, we were trying to put together a conservancy, we'd like to see the golf course remain an open space. Pretty soon, we're going to be encircled by houses, and it would be nice to have, so to speak, the donut hole be a nice central park for Calamasa. I realize that it's a very expensive thing, it would be awesome if the Brazhills would donate it, we could even put their name on a sign. One of the things about parks that I'm not sure if everybody realizes, but this golf course is right in the middle of a multiple species area, so in order to develop that, that's going to be extremely costly for whoever wants to come in and do that, it's going to be very difficult. After talking to Kelly about the multiple species conservative plan, it's going to make the corridor for wild animals probably about from my hand to that wall, which isn't going to fly, no animals are going to go through that. So that's going to restrict them on this side. City parks can increase community engagement, reduce crime, increase revenues for cities. A lot of these national city parks are destinations for people, that would be great for the city also. And like my wife, apparently I was discussing this with her, so she stole my line. City of Yucipa has a regional park, really nice. Cherry Valley has Bogart Park, I'm not sure if Banning has a central park or not. Redlands has Sylvan Park and Prospect Park. So it'd be wonderful if we could work something out, so that the city could either purchase it, or give them a huge tax deduction, or whatever it takes, so that we could incorporate that in and have our own city park here. I think that would be great, and it would make everybody, especially once everything gets developed, feel a little bit better and, you know, help the community come together a little bit better.
Okay, thank you very much. The consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve, other than item six?
I think Wendy did, but we'll do it again here. I'll move to approve the consent calendar, one through, what did we, we're polling six? So one through five, and then seven and eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the bad part for our sergeant over there. He gets to talk to us now about how everything's going on in the city.
Good evening, I wouldn't call it a bad thing to talk about what's going on in the city, I think Calamasa's a really nice location.
Thank you, sir.
And if I could, I'd move my family to this city, so while we take violations of the law seriously. We need to direct our enforcement that way. We take all complaints seriously, and we will address them as such. The captain lieutenant asked me to come speak to some of the things that are occurring in the city. I have some answers, not all, so I apologize if you get an "I don't know," but if you need an answer, I will certainly get one for you. For the period from May 15th to June 4th, there've been about 60 files for traffic, six misdemeanor thefts, three burglaries, three felony frauds, three misdemeanor batteries, two calls for service for narcotics, one felony theft, one unattended death, a TRO, Temporary Restraint Order, domestic violence related, one of those violations, and then one domestic violence violation, one stolen vehicle, and one recovered stolen vehicle, I don't know if those are the same vehicles, but, and then one call for service regarding a robbery. So those are, those are the major happenings that have occurred since, like I said, May 15th.
Okay, any questions? You're off the hook, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire chief, comments and reports?
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Year-to-date, fire departments responded to 709 calls for service, 487 of those are medical aides, 11 fires year-to-date, 31 mutual aid responses given, eight automatic or mutual aid responses received, and of the 31 we've responded, we were counseled 13 times. And we've responded to 159 miscellaneous calls for public service to assist. Wanted to kind of break that down into some percentages tonight, since we're about halfway through the year, approaching that midway point. So 487 medical aides equates to 57% of the total calls for service, based on that alone. However, that number's a little bit skewed. Because of the 159 additional miscellaneous public assist calls, many of those are lift assist, lockouts, child left in vehicle, gas odors, or et cetera, that don't really meet the measure of those medical aid calls. But if we added those two numbers together, that would put us at 91% of our calls for service being medical-related. And just to give you another point of reference, last year at this time, so we were 709 this year so far, year-to-date. Last year, this time, we were running about 744. So our calls, actual calls for service are down slightly. And I kind of, I think I would attribute that to the lightning of the pandemic, you know, we were still running pretty heavy medical calls last year. So those are the numbers. Significant incidents, we've had a rash of traffic collisions requiring extrications with multiple patients over the last two weeks. All of them have been on the freeway, the 26th, I think we had two, one resulted in a rollover off the freeway into a local business property, and then we had another one with two vehicles involved and seven patients that were treated, transported, and underassessed. And then I'm just going to plug two things tonight. Traffic speeds on the freeway, CHP's out there doing their due diligence, but we had our battalion chief rear-ended on the vehicle today, rear-ended on the freeway, eastbound 10 today. He's traveling about 65 miles an hour with traffic, and got rear-ended, never hit his brakes, a car came up behind him and smacked him on the freeway, he's okay, the other party's okay. Folks need to probably slow down, and I'll close out with weed abatement. We've got a lot of compliance in the city, we're doing the community risk reduction approach, put some things in the newspaper, and our deputy fire marshal and team are out inspecting properties and trying to get us ready for when things heat up. And subject to your questions, that's the end of my report.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers reporting. John?
Thank you, Mayor. On May 24th, I attended the San Gregorio Pass Regional Water Alliance. So just kind of a update on the water for the region and for the whole state. So overall, everything's looking pretty good statewide, so the rainfall was down a little bit for the last couple of months, but the snowpack was so great that there's been a lot of snow melting, so there's been a lot of flow of water, so all the water agencies around the state are still trying to catch as much water as possible right now with the melt. And so many of the reservoirs are looking pretty good, a lot of them are full, especially some of those that are up north that impact us down here, looking pretty good. Also, due to some of that high volume of water, some of the local agencies, they're able to capture more water because their allocations, kind of, they set those allocations aside, so if they have the ability to take more water, then they can, if they pay for the cost of shipping it to them, they can take more water than normal, because there's so much water that the state's trying to allow everyone to take as much as they can, why they still can. And then some of the local agencies, because they're taking all this extra water, they set some records for month to month, for some of the water they're able to put back into the ground, so the recharging of water. So they're doing a lot of that locally, so that's a good sign as well for water, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Linda?
On May 19th, I'm not sure who all, tried to attend Riverside Cal City's division meeting. It was scheduled to be at the Storm Stadium in Lake Alsonor, but by the time I got there, it's an hour and a half ride. It was closed, there was an explosion, and a couple of people, contractors were hurt, and so that meeting was, will be rescheduled. Attended the RCTC Budget and Finance Meeting, where they are requesting approval to the full commission on approval of the fiscal years 23, 24 to 27, 28, measure a five-year capital improvement plan for local streets, roads, for participating counties, and so that's quite extensive, I know we probably have that list. Also, attended RTA Executive Committee and Board Meeting, where they approved mainly administrative business. And what was really interesting for me was on June 1st, I attended the SCAG, I've been appointed to the SCAG Transportation Policy, this is the agenda, and it's very interesting, I'm new to this committee, and so I, rather than take half an hour to discuss one item of what they do, it's held in Los Angeles, I'm going to forward this to all the council persons, there's a lot of good information in here, of course, Los Angeles, but good information on how monies are calculated for projects through SCAG. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, sir. So I have a brief report on my meeting for RCA, the Regional Conservation Authority Agency, it's one of our, well, it's one of the biggest conservation programs or group committees in the country, and it's very aggressive in its acquisition of conserving property and protecting it and maintaining it, and so it does some really important work, for those of you who aren't familiar with what the RCA does. But we just approved today our proposed budget for 23, 24, and currently, there's more demand to purchase property than there is money to purchase property. So we'll see how that goes moving forward, but we've already increased our budget for habitat acquisition and maintenance by $60 million year-over-year, dripping into reserves and so forth to meet demand. So obviously, that's not entirely sustainable, so we'll have to visit how we're going to find more funds, and so there is, a part of RCA is reaching out to a lot of other agencies to partner with them, but also trying to get grants from the federal side and the state side, but if you're aware of anything that's going on with the state budget, it's not looking good there either. So we did approve the budget, but we'll see how things begin to develop this year. We also got a brief update on our public engagement, so RCA is trying to communicate more regularly with the public via web, the website, social media in particular, but also sending out newsletters, so if you'd like to know what the RCA does and get involved in staying up to date on property and, you know, the conservation efforts that RCA is engaged in, you can sign up to receive their newsletter, visit their website. And then finally, we just got a update on the budget for the state budget and the federal budget, but in particular, the state, and with the $31 billion deficit being projected by the governor in his revised budget, $98 million is being cut from the budget for habitat conservation in the state, and then $20 million from fish and wildlife. So again, it's going to be hard to get funds to continue with RCA's project, but we're going to do our best. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Wendy?
Yes, I had a WR cog meeting today, actually. A lot of it is routine, we went over, they want to approve giving a raise to our executive director, who's been there a few years now, we talked about that. We also, like I said, there's a lot of the stuff was routine, we went over execution of professional services for agreements of on-call planning services, and we actually had a closed session before our meeting, because everybody tends to leave before the end of the meeting, so we did it beforehand. So that was lengthy, so I think that's why a lot of things went really quick after that. I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have our General Assembly coming up for WR cog, June 29th, at Pachanga in Temecula. And the gal that is speaking there is Doris Kearns Goodwin, are you related to her by any chance? She's a political historian, and she also won a Pulitzer, isn't that true? I was talking, Finance Director likes her, I've read, she's read a few books of hers, she's really good. So if you guys want to attend, you can go on WR cog and get your tickets, and maybe we'll see you there. Our next meeting is June 30th, the day after the General Assembly, we'll be down in Pachanga. So, okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the joint meeting for the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2023 and '24, for the City of Calamasa and the Calamasa Successor Agency. I'll turn it over to the city manager, and he can do his thing.
Thank you, sir. You're the mayor, members of the city council. This is the budget presentation here, is the culmination of several months of hard work by the staff. This is done in addition to the normal day-to-day stuff that they do, so it's, it does add work to their plate, but it's a very important process, and I do appreciate all the staff taking it seriously and putting, you know, a lot of thought into their requests and all their hard work on top of what they already do, which is a lot. The budget is responsive to and conforms with the city's strategic plan, and I'm also proud to say that unlike what it sounds like the state's facing right now, our budget is structurally balanced, as you will see in this presentation. And it'll be largely what you saw at the budget workshop, so it'll just be a condensed version of that, because we didn't hear a lot of changes that were needed, so we're just going to present it as was presented at the workshop. And with that, I will hand it over to our Finance Director, Celeste Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, or thank you, City Manager Kovol. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, thank you so much for being here tonight to receive this presentation for the fiscal year 23, 24 budget for the City of Calamasa. I will be presenting a Cliff Notes version of this presentation. We did have quite an extensive two-hour presentation at the budget workshop, where we took a pretty deep dive into the details, and that presentation is available online if you're interested. I really highly encourage anybody to take a look, you can go to City Calamasa's YouTube page, and it will be available for review there. And this is a little bit of an outline of the process that we went through. As City Manager mentioned, we started off back in late February, working through April, of all of the changes and recommendations that the staff had with respect to the budget. We presented everything to the Finance Committee, we had our workshop, it was about two hours long, I believe, and we are now here this evening together for the budget adoption I'll be highlighting the general fund, I'll be going through a brief summary of our general fund operations. So this is a summary of the budget that's being proposed for adoption this evening. Moving from the left to the right, we do want to take some time to talk about ongoing expenditures versus one time to the total expenditures for this fiscal year that we have recommended. It's really important to emphasize that the general fund has a It's really important to emphasize that the general fund has a structural surplus, as you can see in this far-left column of ongoing revenues and expenditures. The city historically has spent several years, and we spend a lot of time in emphasis, and if you, any of you were with us when we talked about the mid-year budget, we always take great care to differentiate ongoing versus one-time expenditures and revenues because we don't want to get out ahead of our skis, we want to make sure that we can always support the long-term commitments that we're making with respect to purchases. Ongoing funds are routine funds that you can expect to see, they recur every year. Proposed expenditures are expenditures that relate to staffing costs and so forth and utilities, those expenditures that always happen that are part of regular and routine transactions. One-time are decisions that are made that are just that one-time in nature. So oftentimes, one-time expenditures, just as you have households expenditures that you manage, sometimes you have to buy things every other year, sometimes you buy things once every three years for replacement. So these are the type of expenditures we see here. So in the collective, we have about ten million of revenues, we have nine point two million of proposed expenditures for an operating surplus of about eight hundred thousand. We will have transfers out of two point two million, which I'll be talking about in the next slide, for a net change of negative one point four million to our beginning fund balance. We will close our year projecting to have an ending fund balance of six point six million. Here's a snapshot image of our general fund revenues. Just like to point out that three categories comprise about seventy-four percent of our revenues, it's effectively our sales tax and our property taxes that we have coming through. Here's a snapshot of our general fund expenditures, again, looking at the big highlights. We really look at the police and fire budgets in total, and oftentimes you'll hear people reference public safety in totality. As fire chief mentioned, ninety-one percent of the fire calls are related to medical services, and of course, everybody else knows and understands the police services that are provided in our city, and that's about sixty-one percent of our total operating expenditures goes towards our public safety budget. Want to talk about some of the decision and budget highlights that we made with respect to expenditures, with respect to staffing, there has been a recommendation for a cost of living adjustment of five percent for all staff members, this excludes the city manager, health and benefit increase, an increase in salary range for the fire chief, a reclassification for the accounting tech position, and we have some additional recommendations for staffing. We have a planning technician, senior accountant, an Italian chief, and three fire apparatus engineers. We have some shifts in our professional services, we actually have savings with respect to the economic development consultant contract. The city manager is going to be working closely with planning department this year to facilitate economic development long-term. In the finance department, we have the financial consultant services that are now going away because we have a permanent position being filled in for that for those services, and we've added some property tax analytical services. This is a contract that was approved at the last city council meeting. As you, you know, saw on this slide, we have a considerable portion of our revenues coming through from property taxes, and this allows us to do deeper analytics and allows us to tap into some audit services and so forth. And then for fire services, the wildland protection agreement did have an increase this year, and with respect to policing and public safety, we are adding eight flock cameras installed throughout the city at various locations and intersections, and the data from this information can be shared multi-jurisdictionally and will be of benefit not only to City Cal Mesa, but many residents who are nearby. I wanted to give a little detail of the one-time general fund expenditures because I referenced them, they're three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So we're going through a really significant document destruction project, we have community development, we have additional fire prevention costs and building safety costs, these are mirrors in our ratio of the one-time revenues that we're collecting, animal control, we are adding a spay and neuter mobile clinic this year for the residents of Cal Mesa, we're very excited about that. There'll be a grant coming to the city council for their approval if if they choose to do so next at our next council meeting. And then we have some changes with brush, you see the second set of turnouts of eighty thousand dollars, that's not something you expect to have to have year over year, but there's some new compliance measures and standards that are coming through, so that's why these would be included in the one-time expenditure category. Here's another image, a summary of all of our general fund expenditures, we have our one-time, our ongoing, for total expenditures of nine point three. For comparison, we've included the fiscal year twenty-three projected budget numbers. You can see there's a considerable considerable drop this year, and that is because in fiscal year twenty-three, we do have the acquisition of the ladder truck that has been included in there, so there is a drop over year over year, but it's a little bit of a comparison so you can see how expenditures are trending. Here are the transfers out, the capital projects fund, I'll be talking about this in a different slide, but we have one point one million, the CDBG Landscape Maintenance District Vehicle Replacement Fund and Information Technology Fund. I want to highlight these two funds, they're two new funds that we have added to the budget process, and we have included these because we are looking at a five-year range, longer-term structure of vehicle replacements that happen, and of course, information technology, we all know that there's a lot of changes that always happen with information technology, so this is a root funding source for the dollars to get established to take care of these funds on the long-term basis for future expenditures we may have in these categories. So again, in summary, wanted to show beginning fund balance of eight million, estimated revenues, our proposed expenditures for a projected ending fund balance of six point six million. Wanted to talk a little bit about our capital improvement program because we have quite a few things happening in the city of Cala Mesa. As I mentioned, we do have a five-year planning horizon. The approval that is before you this evening will be for the appropriations only for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. We have twenty-one projects pending, there's quite a bit going on here in our city, we have eleven carryover projects, ten new projects. In the collective, we have proposed ninety-four point seven million over the next five years in big projects that are happening. Wanted to take some time because we thought it was important to take a look at the pavement management program. Over the two years, the city head council has opted to commit over four point seven million dollars to improve the streets throughout the city of Cala Mesa. Some of you may have seen some of the work done on your streets already, there's been quite a few, we've had our meetings over which streets are going to be taken care of with the four point seven million. So for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had two point two, and fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we have two point five. Wanted to talk about the funding sources. ARPA has been very topical lately, and I wouldn't be surprised as as you're out in the community if somebody says to you, how did you spend your ARPA money? Well, one hundred percent of the funding has gone towards the pavement management program. When the city received the ARPA money, it was very important to discreetly segregate that money, it was a one-time flush, it's quite significant, and at the time, the city council and the city manager and myself, we all concluded it was best just to separate that out, and it has really been set aside and spent on one-time expenditures, which are which is the big pavement management program. The other element of funding is two million from general fund transfers, this is also after years and years and years of fiscal discipline of when one-time revenues coming in, of letting the fund balance build up over time, and it was quite strategic to let the fund balance build up and spend the money on this project because the dollars in the collective go much further when you're doing pavement management programs, I'm sure our city manager can speak more directly to that than I can, but the dollars go further when you pull greater funds together. So it was a strategic plan to do that. And then, of course, six hundred thousand from our measure A funds. So those are the fundings that are coming through to take care of our city street.
Before, actually, before you leave that slide, I just wanted to point out on the ARPA funds, there has been some talk about the federal budget and the deal, you know, the debt deal that they made, and part of that was calling back some COVID-related money, but I am pleased to report that it was just related to federal money only, like money that's within the federal budget, and it did not affect any ARPA money, not that it matters because we're already committing it, so once you committed, they couldn't claw it back, but there was some thought and some confusion as to whether or not that would be the case when they were talking about that, but the final the final bill that they passed did not claw any back any local CARES Act or ARPA funding, so I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you. Sir, please.
Yeah, that's that's actually good, we sometimes we get caught up in using these acronyms, that stands for the American Rescue Plan Act, so that was the bill that was passed about a year after COVID hit, it was back, I think, in March of twenty-one, that that was passed, it was a it was a very large spending bill, but a big component of that was to give local relief to local governments for lost revenue, so that was the impetus for that money coming in. Some cities actually used it to plug their operations, and so now that that funding is drying up, they're they're finding themselves to be in a lot of trouble because they committed to a lot of ongoing things with one-time money. So, you know, I I think that it's a big kudos to the city council for having the fiscal discipline to, you know, match one-time money with one-time expenditures.
Thank you. Here's an overview, it's a nice, quick visual for our CIP expenditures and where our efforts are going. I heard a city park mentioned, and the city does have three point two million committed for parks, I should say budgeted, it hasn't been entirely, the contract still has to be approved and considered in detail, but funding has been set aside for the Forest Street Park. And this is an all-fund summary, and this is another important visual because there's a lot of numbers on this page, but we're going to talk about what really is important, and I want to have you take a look at the far-right column, the proposed ending balance. I'm very pleased to share with the council with respect to your decision-making and process, we have retained positive fund balance in every single fund that we have. You can see in the collective, they're all positive. In particular, I'd like to highlight our diff funds, we have remaining nine point six million of diff funds available. The diff funds are held in separated funding categories, and we don't have a lot of inter-fund borrowing with respect to diff funds to front-load or pay in advance projects for which we don't have total funding for. So the diff funds are set aside, and we started off the year with two point seven in fund balance in the collective, and we're ending the year in two twenty-five point seven balance in the collective. So, and then the other column I think is kind of nice to see are the proposed transfers in and out, this is a little bit of an idea of where the funds are coming and going, there's that two point two eight million that that I talked about with respect to the general fund, and you can see the funding going into vehicle replacement and IT replacement funds as unique this year. So these are the available reserves that are available to the city, I know that it's always on the back of city council's mind that we are well-prepared in the event of an emergency, so this is always part of our analysis that we do as we take a look at what we have available and what resources we have for the city. And in line with the city council's decision, I think going back to two, or two thousand twenty, the general fund contingency reserve is thirty-five percent of general fund expenditures, and the city council has opted to set some reserve funding aside for our city parks and trails, and this money is not committed for expenditure yet, but it's effectively a placeholder that the city council acknowledges that this is important to them, the constituents in the community, so it's a placeholder establishment for commitments to parks and trail. We have general fund and reserve balance, the capital projects fund balance, vehicle replacement fund balance, and information technology, these are the funds that I referenced earlier that we are looking for a longer-term horizon for replacement and within five years, but it's very important to note that while we are setting the funding aside, if we ever needed it, we could always pull it back because it's funded through a distribution of the general fund, so it's still accessible for general fund purposes in the event of an emergency or if council priorities would change. And I'd like to conclude with tying this into the council's strategic plan that was established, I think also this was back in two thousand and twenty, and take out bits of our, the commitments that have made, the funding commitments, and how it ties with the with the priorities of the council. So with respect to quality of life, we have the three point two million for the Forest Street Park, additional fire personnel, we've talked about significant medical aids and life-saving measures, we have the flock cameras which attribute to the safety and comfort of city residents. Economic development, we have property tax analytic services that are coming through, and the city manager with the additional staff that's available will now be working closely with our planning director to do a longer-term economic development plan. We have infrastructure, we still have the library that is going to be built hopefully this year, I think Darlene can speak to the time, we have our interchange projects that are happening, pavement management program, the county line road, Cala Mesa Boulevard intersection improvements. With respect to community engagement, we had a land use workshop that is also available online and on the city's YouTube channel, another excellent workshop I would recommend that everybody take a listen to if you haven't had an opportunity. We have the podcast, our city manager has established a podcast, it's about a half-hour long, it's fantastic, you can just pick it up on Spotify, he's going to be going through and interviewing different staff members, and it's quite nicely done, very, very, a good podcast, and I enjoyed it. State of the City, we are looking to reband and rebrand and take a look at different approach and commitment to our state-of-the-city process and doing, trying out a new, some new ideas for the council, so we'll talk about that. And of course, our favorite, financial stability and resources, we have a balanced budget, we've established new capital funds, we have a fee study happening, it's our first fee study since year two thousand fourteen. We have grants, the city staff with their time and availability, we're always looking for grant funding, we have community project funding, we have the RCTC Tump Award Program, we have the spay and neuter grant that I had mentioned earlier, we are just doing everything we can to bring as many grant dollars as possible. So recommendation of adopted, recommendation of adoption, we have the resolutions, I won't go through the, I won't read the narrative of these because I think you'll be able to do that in the, when you go through the adoption process. But that concludes my presentation. City managers, is there anything you'd like to add before we jump into discussion?
No, again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, this is, we see some of the things that are happening around us, and I think that the, you know, showing our, all of our fund balances, everything's kind of sustaining on its, you know, standing on its own, you know, two feet type of thing, and I think that's important for having a strong fiscal standing going forward. As we grow, it's going to be become even more important, especially with all these projects we have going our way or coming our way, but it does prepare us well for the future, and so it also does give us a lot of breathing room for any type of economic uncertainties, because you never know when the next recession's going to hit, we could be kept, we keep hearing about it, it still hasn't hit yet, but it's inevitable, it will, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, so I think the city is in good position to weather any storms that may come our way based on past actions of the council.
Are there any items for discussion that y'all would like to mention or any questions you have? Please.
Can you elaborate on what the property tax analytic service does?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. So we engaged with HDL, and they are a property tax service firm, and what they do is they provide and give us more accurate projections and analytics of what we can anticipate our property taxes to be. So our property tax revenues, I think, are five point seven million in the collective, and with such a significant portion of our revenue, we have been able to pretty reasonably estimate what our budgeted revenues are with respect to property tax, but it's such a significant dollar, we don't want to, in the interest of being conservative, we only increase property taxes by two percent, but the likelihood of that being higher is is significant, but it's more, it's a little bit of shooting in the dark, a little bit with respect to some of our, it's it's not, it's such a significant dollar amount, we don't want to just break towards, well, we're just going to be conservative, it's more important to be accurate. So they will help and enhance those services, and they also provide us with geographic data analytics with respect to property tax base and regions and so forth. Well, is there anything else that you can add to what they are going to be providing?
Yeah, they also provide better access to more information at the parcel level for past sales and things like that. There are other services we can use to do that, but having it in that in that package is very helpful for ownership information and things like that, it's in our, it is in our GIS as well, but being able to use that information to explore economic development opportunities, which is why I put it under that category. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good information there to tell us who our largest taxpayers are, we can, or our largest assessed values and things like that. The other thing it'll allow us to do is we can create geographical areas, so if we wanted to take all the undeveloped parcels of Summerwind and say, track these, when they get subdivided, show us what the changes in the values are, so we can really get a good idea of what the revenue changes are based on development. good idea of what the revenue changes are based on development versus undeveloped lands. So there's a lot of great information that'll help us make a lot of decisions in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to commend the staff. This is very detailed and transparent information for our community. Everyone wants to know where, where we stand with the budget. And we are very honest and straightforward, and I think it's going to be well-received by the community. So thank you for going, I know it took hours and hours to prepare the budget, the, all your departments. So thank, I know. Well, that's ours. But it's well-appreciated, and I think the community will appreciate it as well. Just wanted to, to thank you for all that.
Thank you very much. It's our pleasure. Thank you.
I'll briefly just echo a little bit of that, too, because this is now my third time going through this budget in detail with the Finance Committee. We did it, we did it at a workshop, and, and now in preparation for tonight. And I know the, the hours that I've spent reviewing it, and I can only imagine the, the amount, the volume of time the staff has went through it, and it really shows. And so I want to commend you all on an exceptional job managing the city's resources and expenses. You've done a fabulous job. We have a, a wonderful budget. We know where we stand. It's clear. We're in financially good shape. Our residents could be very proud of how our city has managed its resources and done a tremendous amount with, with, with not a lot. We've made it go very far. And Calamasa is coming of age. We're becoming a full-service city, and it takes a lot, you know, to, to manage that with, with the resources that we have. And our staff has done an exceptional job. So thank you. I think, I think we can all be proud of, of where we are. So I think a big thank you is in order.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And what a concept to have a balanced budget.
Not all of our regional labors can say.
It would challenge all, everybody in that, you know, our government to do that. That would be a good idea.
You know, we've, we've grown and we've learned. And, you know, we've had our problems just like any other city. And then it's, I've, I've seen a lot of things change here to where we have a pretty good handle on what, what is going on in the city, and we continue to, to keep on with it. And it's, you know, it wasn't always, you know, roses years ago. You know, it, you know, if, if we had a, a thousand dollars in reserve, we were doing good. So it's, no, it was seriously that bad. But there was no growth. There was no, nothing happening. So it's, just watch what you're doing with your money and spend it wisely. But thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
I was gonna add just comments real quick on it. I think this is one of the most important things that we do as far as the budget goes. So I'm happy to kind of jump in and, and see what everyone's been doing and all the good work that's been done before me. So I think, just looking at this year, there's obviously been a lot of needs as the city grows and all these different departments. And so I think we're able to address, you know, some of those needs this, this time, which is good to see. You know, we're adding in different, different departments that haven't been able to do before. I don't think we're able to meet all of our needs, but as the city grows, hopefully we can continue to address, you know, other, other departments. I know we've heard recently just some concerns about crime or, or level of service as far as police goes. So I'm hoping that, and looking forward, we can also, you know, take a closer, you know, look, look at that as well, you know. And, and that's just one of other places I'm sure we need to, need to address as, you know, the budget allows us to do that. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Make a motion.
I'll move that the city, should I do these one by one? Okay. So I'll move that the city council adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the city council, the city of Calamasa, California, establishing the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four appropriation limit. And secondly, that the city council adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Calamasa, California, adopting Calamasa fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, general fund, operating budget, special fund budget, capital improvement program, and cost allocation plan, and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget document. And third, that the Calamasa Successor Agency adopt CSA Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Successor Agency to the Calamasa Redevelopment Agency, adopting the proposed Calamasa Successor Agency budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn the successor agency to the Calamasa Redevelopment Agency and reconvene the city council. Now we have mayor and council members' comments and reports. John?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to just add a little bit, just on my, my point or concern, just looking closely at the level of police service that we're able to provide. So I really wanted to take a close, closer look at that, kind of analyze some of the data as far as just crime or level of service, take, take a deeper dive into that. And that's really just so we can make some informed decisions moving forward, just to get some information. We can make smart decisions, see what's going to be best for the community. So I think in order to do that, what I'd like to do is propose the, the creation of an ad hoc, a police ad hoc committee. So I'd like to just place that on a, a future agenda so the council can discuss that and that, just for the purpose of just analyzing that particular issue and making some hopefully informed decisions for the future. That's all I have.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, well, let's see if we can get that on our next agenda, please.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I just had just a couple items. I just wanted to remind everyone that on Monday, at our Fourth Street Park at ten thirty, from Monday through July twenty-one, we have our free lunch program for our kids in our community. This is school food. That's, it's a, a contract between the school district, city of Calamasa, and the government. The government provides the food for kids who, you know, maybe this is their big meal of the day. And so I, I, my grandkids and I kind of do it every year. We haven't done it in a couple of years because of COVID, but it's always fun for the kids. We have games, and normally the, the library comes and reads to the kids. That's not in their budget this year, so I, I polished off my, my, my book, my library card so that I could read to the kids at the park. So if you have the time, come on by the park, Fourth Street Park, ten, it's only half hour, half hour lunch. It's at early, at ten thirty, so it's not too hard, too hot for the kids because most of them walk. And then lastly, this gag has some meetings available to the community. They're offering it to the community. I'll see if we can put it on our website. But the topics are safe and active working streets, working group, equity working group, and sustainable and resilient communities, natural and farm bonds, conservancy, working groups. So this is information about books to the community. If you're interested in those, I'll see if I can get that on our, on our website. And thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Linda. Wendy?
Yeah. So I wanted to say a couple things about what I did last couple weeks. On Thursday, May twenty-fifth, I attended the Calamasa Chamber of Commerce, two thousand twenty-three Scholarship Awards Tea. It was at the Edward D. Museum, which is the first time I've ever been there. It was beautiful, just a beautiful place. Nice room, Riverside County, Fifth District Supervisor Xian Gutierrez was the speaker. And they gave awards to not, scholarships, sorry, not awards, scholarships to nine kids this year, which was really amazing. They said they had some money left over, so they were able to give more. So if you guys want to give money to the chamber for their scholarships, it's a really great program. The kids, there were kids from everywhere, Arrowhead Christian, Beaumont High School, Mesa Grande Academy, and Utaqua High School. So it, it was a really neat event. And then I also attended the Memorial Day event out there at the cemetery on the twenty-ninth, which was a very nice event. And then on June eighth, I got to attend the eighth-grade graduation promotion at Mesa View Middle School. That was kind of cool. They gave out quite a few awards to the kids. It was really neat to see all these young kids moving up. They're, they're looking more adult than they used to. That was kind of weird. It was nice. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Just briefly, I want to thank a couple of our residents for coming and sharing, especially about the park, something I've been talking about. Maybe what we could do with the golf course. So, so, you know, all ideas are welcome there. I think the more we can hear from the public on, on what we should do, what we can do, it's helpful. I didn't, I didn't put you up to it, but then I've been speaking, speaking on for a while. I'd like to see us put that golf course to use, you know, for the good of the community and the city. So we do have some money earmarked in the upcoming year for our trail system, and so I'm really excited about that. Again, thank you to, to the city manager and others who helped find that money in our budget so that we can begin to invest in that. I know some of our residents are really excited about that. So I'm going to put our Parks, Trails, Community Service Commission to work in, in identifying what the best use of that funds is, and how we can maximize that, that, that money and where we should focus it. So good, good things are coming. Just, let's, let's all continue to, to be diligent about, you know, financially, first of all, be diligent with our resources, but also, yeah, find some creative ways so we can, you know, develop some of these, these, protect some of these lands, but also develop some of these, these areas in our city for the good of the community, in particular the golf course. But that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, thank you. You know, and some of us have actually talked to Art and John, and let, the, the price is not a good discussion, man, with the two of them. That's, I, I did talk them down not to arrange that I could purchase it, but I had enough people at one time that were interested in getting involved that live around the course. And it's, and there's a lot of people that still have interest. And, you know, it could be discussed further. You know, I would love to see it turned into a park. I've tried to talk to county and turn it into a regional park. Regional parks are usually done by the counties. Yeah, so, and you heard what the money situation is there. So, you know, unless, you know, anyway, I attended the, the Memorial Day function, and it was not really attended as well as I would have liked to seen it, but I don't know if it was weather or lack of interest. I have no idea. But it was good to see all the veterans there and everything else. And it was, you know, it's good to see my friend, Dick Riddell. He, he gave a very good talk. And I hope I could speak that. I can't speak that well now. And, you know, at his age, he is doing very well, and he recited a poem that, that he had done seven years ago. It was, it was just a very good, you know, group and everything else. I was proud to be there. You know, and that, that, let's see, we've got, I've, I've got a thing here that says the Lions Club's going to have an installation dinner on June, June twenty-eighth. If you'd like to buy a ticket for fifteen dollars, you can go to it, and it's up there at Noble Creek Community Center. And then Boys and Girls Club has got something, I think, on the sixteenth for a fundraiser.
Horses and Hatties.
Yeah, horses.
Horses and what?
Horses and Hattitudes, but they do something similar to the chamber. They do like a horse race.
Horse racing on, on the screen, and you get to bet on it, and funny money. But that's also at Noble Creek. And really, I could agree with the, the fire chief on people speeding. You know, it's, I'm just amazed that, you know, the traffic on, on Singleton has, it's gotten better. You know, it's pretty much so. But there's always, I, the other night when I was pulling my race car home from the Lakes Meet, near eleven o'clock at night, I had two guys pass me, you know, doing about eighty or ninety mile an hour. And, you know, I, that's, I was getting ready to turn into my driveway, and they passed me on the left. You know, so it, it, and I, I did the next day check my signals, and they were working. So, you know, it just, people are crazy. You know, and on the freeways, it's nothing to see eighty, ninety mile, mile an hour. You know, and it's just at what point you have to just drive defensively and pay attention. And that, that's about all. I, thank you for attending this meeting and, and listening to our, you know, I'm with, I, I'm amazed that, I, I had asked Solis for the Reader's Digest version. She did a very good job. You know, because it's, it's, she hit all the points that we've all looked at and everything else. So with that, I'm going to give it to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm up to the city council. I just wanted to give one update on the ongoing saga of the Cherry Valley Boulevard interim improvements and the closures and the moving targets that we've had for that. We did have a, I, I just want to kind of, again, reemphasize because it seems like that we're not, the message isn't quite getting across. These interim improvements, and these are interim improvements, so once these signals are in, that doesn't, that's not where it stops. They're being done as a result of the county's approval of the warehouses to the east of the interchange in the unincorporated area of the county. One of the conditions of approval was for the, for them to install these signals prior to the certificate of occupancy. So they can't operate those warehouses until those signals are up and running. So there's that. The city isn't actively engaged in planning the ultimate improvements. We're hoping to get environmental documents approved later this summer, which will allow us to finish up the design, and then that will clear the way for right-of-way, and then ultimately construction. So we're hoping this time next year, we're bidding out the project for construction. That's our goal at this point. We've worked closely with the developer, Caltrans, the county, and the city of Beaumont to try and come up with solutions that will expedite the completion of the interim work while minimizing the closure impacts of some of the ones that were, that, I mean, these, these impacts are inevitable. You're just working in such a small footprint, and the only way to get these things done is you have to close things off from time to time. So, but we are trying to make sure that before, you know, we, we came up with a final plan, that we're coming up with something that, you know, mitigates those impacts as much as possible. So the plan, as it stands today, is the eastbound off-ramp closure, which will be a twenty-four hours, twenty-four, seven closure, begins the night of June fifteenth and concludes the morning of June twentieth. So the plan, if it goes according to plan, the, the impact would only be on the Friday evening and Monday evening commutes. That's usually the big impacts on, on the eastbound off-ramp. The signed detour would be to exit Oak Valley Parkway, the next exit up, turn left, and then go back westbound on I-ten to get back to Cherry Valley. Residents, of course, may use other alternatives as they see fit. If they, they know the area, they can go whatever, if they go to Woodtuckwood or Desert Lawn or whatever. But the signed detour will be to go back the other way on the freeway. And then the eastbound on-ramp closure will also be a twenty-four, seven closure. Originally, this was planned to be a, include a one-way traffic westbound across the Cherry Valley Boulevard Bridge, effectively cutting off the entire interchange from Summerwind and all the Beaumont developments. But we've worked together with them to come up with a solution that keep both directions of travel open during this closure. So it'll only impact the on-ramp itself and not both the rec, not just, and both directions of travel will be open. That, the, the dates need to be finalized, but the, it's going to happen after the Fourth of July holiday. And then there will probably be a third closure that'll be needed to complete the work. The details of that are still pending. So I just wanted to give that update on the Cherry Valley Boulevard closures. But again, kudos and thanks to both the county and the city of Beaumont for working with us to make sure that we can try to come up with creative solutions to minimize the impacts.
Okay. Bren?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will now meet in closed session to discuss two items. They are both conferences with the city's real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine, five six point eight. The first property is located generally on the south side of County Line Road, west of Third Street, and the parcel numbers are in the agenda. The city's negotiator is the city manager, and he is negotiating with Billy W. Simmons and Monte Vista Medical Center. And they are negotiating the price and terms for acquisition of property by the city. The second property to be discussed is located at three zero one West County Line Road. Again, the city manager is the negotiator for the city. at 301 West County Line Road. Again, the city manager is the negotiator for the city, and he is negotiating with 711 Incorporated, and they are negotiating price and terms for acquisition of the property by the city. This concludes my report.
Okay, we will move on to the closed session meeting, and thank you very much for being here.